Good morning, everyone. This the Wednesday, March 5, 2025, regular meeting of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners. It's hereby called to order. Before we begin our business today, I want to recognize former Commissioner Susie Walters is here today. Thank you, Susie. You're always welcome. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, as you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Some move second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to a recognition and a presentation from the Arts and Culture Committee. Kelly?
Thank you so much. I'm not used to being up here this quickly in a meeting, so I apologize. Go through this quickly. We do this every year, and so there's a lot of repetitive aspects of it, but happy to answer any questions that you may have. So, this morning, I would like to give an update on the Town of Naxhead Art and Culture Committee and emphasis, I suppose, on Doughty Park markets and other activities that we are focusing on. We do host multiple types of markets throughout the year, and each cater to a different audience. So, that's on the slide that we have in front of you. So, our Farmers Market, that's on Thursdays, June through August. Priority is given to returning vendors, particularly those selling local foods, perishables, and consumables. We have our Family Fund Programs. Those are in the summer. These are themed markets. They're held once a month on Tuesdays. They feature special attractions such as Riptide the Horse from the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, the SPCA, and storytelling events. Then we have our Holiday Markets. Those are in November and December. There's four markets total, three in the daytime, one in the evening, and they all have a holiday atmosphere to them. Then we have our Winter Markets. These are once a month, January through April, and those focus exclusively on food vendors. Moving forward, we did have a very successful Farmers Market in 2024. We had about 65 vendors, just under half or maybe right at half. We're specializing in perishables and consumables. We were unable to accept any new artisans due to demand, but we did have farmers from surrounding areas such as Currituck, Creswell, Columbia, Hertford, and Elizabeth City that were there each week, so that was wonderful. As always, the highest visitation was in July. We have our market around the 4th, so that always brings in a lot of people. And as in previous years, social media and distributing posters around town proves to be the most effective marketing for us. For the 2025 market, this is just a slide of some of the wonderful things that we have at our markets. For the 2025 market, that's going to run June 12 through August 21. Due to the Naxhead Elementary School schedule, we're limited to 11 markets this season so that we don't create parking concerns while school is going on. This market continues to be very popular, which makes it challenging to accommodate those vendors with seniority and to be able to accept new vendors. So, we polled previous vendors, and it looks like most all of them are coming back. We're going to have about three to five openings, so Paige is working specifically with farmers, producers, consumables to fill So moving forward, our 2024 Summer Concert Series had ten performances. It's continuing to gain popularity. There's a growing audience, and Paige always comments about the sense of community with returning faces and people bringing snacks and dinners and things with their families to enjoy these concerts, so that's pretty wonderful. In 2025, we've got twelve bands lined up. We do provide sound. That runs about six hundred per band. When there's a larger band that provides their own sound, that's great, but that band also usually costs more, so it evens out or ends up being a savings to the town. And then, as always, we do hope that we can get the military band back, but it's not confirmed yet, so Paige is writing that and trying to make sure we're taking into consideration when that's an option. So Family Fun Nights, the Fall Market, and Kids' Day. In 2024, we held three Family Fun Nights, and we had a Kids' Day event. For 2025, we would like to shift the Family Fun Programs to Tuesday mornings. Having them in the evenings right at six tends to conflict with people getting off work, getting home, and really unable to get their children there. So talking with Paige, she did feel like if we pulled that back to Tuesday mornings, that there would be, it would be more accessible and more attendance for these kids' events. So we're going to try that out this season, assuming everyone is comfortable with that. We're coordinating with organizations like the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, again, Ascension Music, and some local storytelling groups for our Kids' Night, for our Kids' Programs this year. And our Kids' Back to School Event is going to be held on August 26th, which will have kids' activities, music, and engagement with the Boys and Fire, which they always love, and it's so wonderful to see other town departments out there getting involved. So 2024 Holiday Markets, we had about seventy vendors. These were three Saturday markets and an evening market, and each market saw around three hundred and fifty vendors, and there was a strong support from our locals. The Fourth Annual Tree Lighting Ceremony and the Flashlight Candy Cane Hunt, we plan to continue those as usual, and our Winter Markets have proven to be a great success, and the community genuinely appreciates having availability to fresh local foods in these off-seasons. So moving forward, we want to continue the Holiday Markets, but we do want to explore some ways to boost attendance for that evening market. The evening market is beautiful. It's decorated. It's an amazing atmosphere, but there tends to not be a whole lot of sales on that night. So finding ways to generate more sales for air vendors on that evening market is going to be something we're looking to do this season. We want to expand the holiday lighting and decorations at Doughty Park because as these events grow, obviously the community is very appreciative of that. And our Winter Markets have been very well-received, and we will, of course, be offering those next season as well. So some other happenings with art and culture. We continue to offer the fitness programs like yoga and Fitness Fridays. We have a new initiative proposed. It's called Kids' Move More. That's going to be Friday mornings in July through July and early August. We're going to continue showing family-friendly movies in the park. We hope to expand that to Barnes Street. We did not see that happen this past season, but we're going to try to make that happen this upcoming fall. And then, as far as our public art and pedestrian safety initiatives, this past season, we had the Honors Art Class from Manio High School, Paint the Intersection at Bonnet Street and Wrightsville Avenue, right there beside Doughty Park. We would like to identify another intersection to work on another crosswalk this upcoming season. The committee held a Paint and Skate after artist Chris Wheeler finished the mural at the Skate Park by the YMCA, and that was really well-received. We installed two new art panels on our art masks along Beach Road, and we have three or four artists working on those panels again this upcoming season, so looking forward to having some more of those along the Beach Road. And we would like to introduce a new event, Yappy Hour, at the Satterfield Landing Dog Park, and that would be on Wednesday mornings, June 25th through August 26th. There is a budget ask there, but it would be minimal. It's just some little pools and trees and things like that, so. Moving forward, sponsorships are increasing. We have about a little over five thousand in 2024. We anticipate that or more in 2025. And as our programs grow, so do the responsibilities, so we would love to have any volunteers from the community. Please reach out to us if you're interested. And as always, we're grateful for all the businesses, organizations, and individuals that make this happen. And final slide is just a big thank you to everyone, the Board of Commissioners, the Art and Culture Committee. We have Peggy Saporito in the audience today who's on the committee as well. So thank you to them, to all the town staff, our volunteers, community partners. Also want to extend appreciation to the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Services. They're there. They make these, these events go off smoothly, and genuinely, everyone in the community loves to interact with our other departments. So also thank you to the vendors, musicians, fitness instructors, and schools for their support, and most of all, to the community. So that's all I have for you today. Happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I apologize if Paige couldn't be.
I have a couple of things before I turn it to the Commissioners. Speak just very briefly to our representation of the Todd Craft Wastewater Initiative at the markets. Are we just going to continue that this summer?
Absolutely. Our environmental planner, Connor Twitty, this past season, he attended the Farmers Markets. We had a little town booth set up. He was available to talk to people about the Septic Health Initiative, and he actually picked up quite a few inspection requests from that, so we will absolutely continue to do that again this year. And we may even have Planner Chris Trimbley out there talking about our Dark Skies Initiative occasionally as well.
Very good. And one other thing, I appreciate the committee's effort to expand activities to our other parks, especially the, at Satterfield. That's, that sounds nice. Is there any thought, we're getting ready to do some, we're preparing to undertake improvements at the Whalebone Park. Is there any thought being given to what might happen at Whalebone?
Absolutely. So when our Art and Culture Committee meets, we always kind of chime in on the process of Whalebone Park, where we're at, what's happening. So now that we have the pavilion and the restrooms coming up, we do anticipate having more discussions about what types of activities we could shift and have down there at Whalebone Park as well.
Cool.
Excited for that.
Mr. Sanders?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to echo the thank yous that you gave to everyone, and I'm really excited to see how well we're using this space and everything that the town's doing. It's really exciting, and I just appreciate all your work. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sears?
No, I thank the committee and you for everything, and the positivity that that brings to the community is wonderful.
Thank you.
Commissioner Leiber?
No questions. Just thank you, and I'm also very excited about Whalebone Park and to see stuff starting to happen with that.
Wonderful.
Yeah, good. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And that brings us next to public comment, and I will turn that over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide comment to the board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to comment, but anybody who wishes to comment has an opportunity to do so right now. Also, we have a public hearing on the budget, so if you're here to speak about that, you should reserve your comments until we get to that public hearing. But anyone else who wishes to address the board, this is your chance to do so. If you'll please go to the podium and start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board, and I will let you know when your five minutes is just about up.
Thank you. Good day. My name is Tiana Stathis, and I'm here representing the League of Women Voters of Dare County. We're here to present the 2025 Citizens Guide, Your Guide to Community Services. Complimentary cop, complimentary copies of the guide published by the League since 1988 are distributed annually to government and businesses, business offices throughout Dare County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national governmental agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. Our guide is published under the auspices of the State League of Women Voters Citizen Education Foundation. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward publication expenses. Thank you, and thanks to all staff members who helped update this information of this year's version. League members are now just distributing sixty-four hundred copies of the guide from Duck to Hatteras Village, Roanoke Island, and mainland Dare. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the Baum and Fessident Centers, as well as town and county offices. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens, citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is voted, is open to anyone of voting age. We thank you for your support, and we'll, we know you'll find our guide useful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm done.
All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Walters?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Susie Walters, and I live at 415 Raceview Court in Nagshead. At your last meeting, you were unable to come to consensus regarding an appointment to the Board of Commissioners to temporarily fill the seat vacated when Kevin Brinkley resigned. I was unable to attend the meeting but was able to watch via YouTube. It is disheartening that you can't come to a consensus to fill the seat with one of the fourteen applicants. Two motions were made without qualifying the reason for nomination. Both failed on a two-two split. One motion was made with qualifications for the nomination. This motion also failed twice. Therefore, the most qualified applicant who has led the Nagshead Planning Board as chair for seven years was not, was not selected. This person was recently nominated and elected unanimously as chair of the Planning Board for the seventh time by her fellow Planning Board members. Her leadership skills and knowledge regarding town issues are outstanding. She leads the Planning Board to achieve consensus regarding issues before the board, meets with staff regarding the agenda and supporting documentation, attends many of your meetings, and answers any questions you may have. Since no qualifying reasons were given for the other nominations, the perception is that sexism exists on this board. As a longtime citizen of Nagshead and former commissioner, I find this disheartening. You have dragged this out longer than necessary. Your inability to make an informed decision regarding the best interest of the town is astonishing. I hope you will examine your motivations, reread all of the applications, and do what is best for our community. Nagshead Commissioners have a long history of rising to any opportunity or challenge to serve our community. I have faith that you will also. Thank you for your service. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Walters.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor, Town Manager. John Costulis. I live at 4201 13th Street in Nagshead. Let me give you a little bit of background about myself and my family. Deep roots from the early nineteen hundreds in Hyde County and Dare County. My Aunt Lena ran the Sea Ranch Hotel during the Big Band Era for thirty years. My father had a dream of building a family home in the Outer Banks, particularly in Nagshead. He worked as a teacher and educator for thirty years but could never afford to build a house for our family here in the Outer Banks. I was fortunate enough to learn from his hard works and his dedication to people and to his students that, to further our family, I had to get a better education. So luckily, after working for NASA for thirty-five years, retired as a Senior Executive Certified Employee, federal employee, working space technology, human resources, budget management, huge projects, management of huge projects, worked in DC on the Hill. I was able to do that for my family in 2019. During COVID, we built our house, and we've been here since. I was lucky to have, lived in a town called Pecosa, Virginia. Don't even know if anybody knows Pecosa, Virginia, but think about it this way. A lot like Nagshead, Manio, and Whanchee combined. Very small town, very focused on making sure that the town, its people, and the people that come and visit are welcomed. So having served on the school board and school board chairman, I've noticed a few things about the town, and if you would allow me to provide some external view. The town here, I love how it operates and everything, but I think there's a couple of opportunities that should be considered. One, first and foremost, there's a lot of people that have a lot to offer the town, and you should consider how you structure your boards, especially if they're not elected to the boards. You ought to think about term limits because there's people that can come in. In our town, Pecosa had two, three-year terms for all boards because it allows an opportunity for people to come in and provide their input from various experiences and a diverse set of backgrounds. Secondly, I think you as a board have a great opportunity to help young people. We made a conscious effort for all of our boards and our councils to include high school students that want to look at maybe going into public administration, business management, whatever that might be. And I realize there are certain functions of a board and a commission or a town council that may not be appropriate for students to be a part of, but in the broader sense, you have an opportunity to do that. We saw a lot of our students go to very high, because on their resume it looks fantastic, very high-performing universities, and have come back and given back to the community in public service, which is, I think, is extremely important. And lastly, I'd like to address the other thing is, the other thing. You should give strong consideration to motives of the people that you bring onto your Board of Commissioners, making sure that they're a good representative of first, the town employees, a good representative of the town constituents themselves, and to tourists. I know you're struggling with how you're potentially fulfilling an appointed position, but I will tell you, there's a lot of people that are frustrated. There are a lot of people that are worried. There are a lot of people that feel diminished and threatened. A lot of people that are feeling, feel retaliation, and I'm here to speak a little bit about those folks, for those folks. I'd be, I want to be totally transparent in this process, and thank you for the five minutes that we have to speak.
And that is five minutes right there.
Okay, thank you. Just be very considerate of the people that you're bringing onto the board and what their motives are, and allow people, new people, to have an opportunity to serve on your boards. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costulis. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Thank you, Mr. Leidy. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda, which you have before you, and a motion would be in order.
Some move, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to public hearings, and Mr. Leidy and Amy. That brings us to public hearings, and Mr. Leidy and Amy will handle this part.
All right. Well, at this time then, we will begin the public hearing to consider a very, a proposed financing arrangement for the fiscal year 2020-25 for various projects. I guess the Ocean Rescue Housing and purchase of property at 4222 South Croatan Highway. And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's overview of this matter by the Deputy Town Manager and Finance Officer, Amy Miller.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity. So today, our public hearing is required by state statute. It's required as part of the LGC approval that we need for the financing of real property and real property improvements, and that is the Ocean Rescue Workforce Housing located at Hell Center Drive. That is in our CIP and adopted budget for this fiscal year, as well as the purchase of 4222 South Croatan Highway. Both of these projects have reimbursement resolutions that were approved by the board. And so the, the financing that we're going to do is two different terms. For the vacant land at 4222, we're going to finance approximately $1.5 million for 10 years in arrears, with an interest rate not to exceed 4.32%. We bid out the financing terms. PNC was the, the winning bank. And then the other one, that is the Ocean Rescue Housing, that's not to exceed 5.48% for a nine-year financing in arrears. And we're actually working under contract with our bond attorneys, Parker Poe. Because we are receiving rent on that property, the, the bond attorneys for PNC was not comfortable signing off on, that, that would be non-taxable. So the 5.48% is non-tax, the, sorry, the taxable rate, that's why it's more, because we're receiving rent. However, our bond attorneys are prepared to provide a letter to PNC that it would qualify as non-taxable, giving us the lower rate. But for, for the purposes right now, because we don't have that letter just yet, the not to exceed is 5.48%, knowing it will probably be less. And the, the amount that we need to pay our bond attorneys to provide that letter is very minimal compared to the 80-some thousand it will save us over the course of the financing. So they're pretty confident we could do that. So just know that that's kind of in the works. The LGC approval is April 1st, and so we're just trying to, you know, do everything in the proper order. And part of that is making sure we've met all the statutes for bidding and the public hearing. And I know John Leidy's firm is helping us with that letter of assurance for the LGC. So if you have any other questions, let me know. But thank you for your, for your help in, in getting the, the LGC approval.
Thank you.
And, and, oh, sorry, there is also a budget amendment to go with this. And the, because the land kind of came up this fiscal year, it wasn't really part of the, you know, we didn't know that was going to happen when we were prepared the budget. That just records all the activity, including the sale of the, the other property and the event site. So we're using the proceeds from the sale of those two properties to help, to put cash down, I guess, for this property. So that, that budget amendment is included as well.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Amy. Any questions for Ms. Miller? I have one question. So the, you're asking the board to approve the budget amendment and two financing resolutions, is that right?
Well, one, yes. And I'm sorry, I didn't elaborate on that. One is the financing resolution that just basically says you're going to accept the terms of, you know, the bank and the interest rate. And again, that is a not-to-exceed amount, because we don't have that letter yet from our bond attorney. So just know that it will probably be the 4.32% for both, but for the purposes of this, it's, we have to put that in there right now, because we're still working on that. And then the finding, the findings resolution is required by the LGC also. It just basically states we're following statutes for issuing debt and why that we're doing these projects.
All right. Thank you very much. Does any member of the public wish to comment on these proposed resolutions or the budget Anything further from staff on this?
Not that I can think of. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any other questions or want any other information before you deliberate on these?
I just want to clarify the actions, but I can do that in the hearing or after.
That'd be fine.
So we're going to, we, we need three, three motions, I believe, is we approve the financing amendment and the findings resolution and the finance terms resolution?
Those are the three items that I would need approval for.
Okay, yes.
All right. At this time, let's conclude the public hearing and move on to the board's deliberations or actions on the, on the matter.
And the budget, and the budget amendment.
Yeah.
Yes, the budget, yes.
So I make a motion to approve the financing terms for Ocean Rescue Construction and the purchase of 4222 South Croatan Highway.
And do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the filing of the application for approval of financing agreement, Ocean Rescue Housing Purchase 4222 South Croatan Highway.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I'll make the, the motion to approve the budget amendment request as seen.
Okay. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the, the amendment as well. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item on our agenda then is reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director, Kelly. Now it's your normal time.
This is what I'm used to. Okay. All right. So not too, too much to report out on today, as always, just a list of the primary meetings that our department had through February. I did want to highlight the Planning Board's most recent meeting, which was February 18th. They did hear a text amendment from Attorney Kraus Gray Jr. on behalf of Nags Head 87 LLC to increase the number of fueling dispensers available at fueling stations from four to eight, as well as to increase the size of any convenience store associated with a fueling station within the C2 district. And the Planning Board recommended unanimously for denial of that text amendment as it was presented. We also had a text amendment from the Shields family to allow the use of bar and lounge as a permitted use in the C5 historic commercial character zoning district. And after speaking with them and their representative, they did want to pull that, continue to have a conversation with staff about what it is they desire to do on that property, and perhaps it does not rise to the level of a bar or lounge. So we're still working with them on that. So that came off the agenda. And then we did have a continued conversation about ADUs. And I think we are at a place where if the Board of Commissioners is inclined to do so, that we would be ready for a joint workshop with the Planning Board, planning staff, and the Board of Commissioners. So perhaps that is something that you can discuss later. The next meeting for the Planning Board is March 18th. We'll continue the conversation on ADUs. We had an item as part of our strategic plan to identify areas where there's incompatible uses with the comp plan. There was an example given of the commercial outdoor recreation overlay district, so staff is just now in the process of looking at that, and we will have a report to the Planning Board, hopefully, at their next meeting. And then what I did not include in here is we just had our TRC meeting for a Starbucks, a restaurant at the outlets, Nags Head, formerly Tanger Outlets. So that is likely to be on the Planning Board's next agenda as well, just as a site plan. It's not a special use or anything like that. And just to reiterate, they did remove the drive-through, so it is just a standalone restaurant. As far as other things that we're working on, the Septic Health Advisory Committee, we continue to work on getting our four new loggers installed. And I'm sure, as everybody has heard about, we were the recipients of NCDQ funding under the Decentralized Wastewater Treatment System Pilot Program. I think there's a lot of conversations to be had on that moving forward, but it is exciting that that was granted. Estorin Shoreline Management, geotechnical work is continuing with that. Sand relocation, we're up to about 118 authorizations and expending about 134,000 in dune management cost-share monies. Our Deputy Planning Director, Joe Costello, will be giving an update on the Hazard Mitigation Plan next, I believe. And then we just had our update for Doughty Park Arts and Culture. We just reiterate that we do have a winter market coming up on March 8th, this Saturday, 9:00 to noon. Paige is out of town, I'm running this market, so I'm really hoping it goes smoothly. Just putting that out there. I'm happy to answer any questions, Amy.
Commissioner Lambert?
No questions.
Mr. Sears?
No questions.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to the market. I had to miss the last one, so I'm looking forward to Saturday.
We've been going really well.
Okay, good, good. Glad to hear it. Commissioner Sanders?
No questions. Thank you. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kelly. And that, that is a freestanding Starbucks. It's not going in the shop, et cetera, somewhere.
Correct. It's in the, it will be in the parking lot. I would not want to be in this.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. All right, Joe, with a resolution to adopt the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of the Outer Banks Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan was to identify, assess, and mitigate hazard risk to better protect people and property within Currituck and Dare Counties against the effects of natural and human-caused hazards. The plan evaluates and prioritizes hazards using a priority risk index, basically ranking hazards as low, medium, or high risk, and then determining strategies to basically mitigate those risks. The development of a hazard mitigation plan is a requirement to any local government applying for federal mitigation grant funds. This plan ensures all jurisdictions on the Outer Banks remain eligible for federal disaster assistance, including hazard mitigation grant program funds, the Building Resilient and Infrastructure Communities Program Funds, which are called BRIC funds, and then flood mitigation assistance funds. The plan included a robust public outreach process. We had feedback from all local jurisdictions, had representatives, the local business community, property owners. There was also, I think, four public hearings or public meetings that discussed the, the plan. It was well-advertised on radio, website, social media. So we ask that you consider adoption of the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Sanders?
No questions. No, thank you.
When did the, this initiative start? I mean, this was a while ago.
Yeah, I think the first meeting was around this time last year. I think it was April. I have them written down. Yeah, the kickoff meeting was April 2024, and then the most recent public meeting was January, where they did a final review.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
No questions. Thank you, Joe.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate that. All right, having seen this item and having heard Joe's presentation, a, a motion to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, very good. That brings us to committee reports, and I will start with Commissioner Sanders.
Ms. Wyatt gave you an update on the Estorin Shoreline Committee, and just want to remind everybody about the big 50-year celebration at Jockeys Ridge. That is June 5th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. They got a lot of activities going on, a band, hopefully a drone show, and a lot of other stuff. And you can get some more information there at the info@friendsofjockeysridge.org.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. The peer committee has not met again, but I will, this is not really a committee, but I will say, I do want to report on our trip to the legislature last week. Commissioner Lambert, Town Manager Garman, and I, along with our lobbyists, were able to visit our legislators last week and present a list of spending or allocation of funds and policy priorities to them. We were well-received. Thanks to our consultants, the lobbyists, we were very well-prepared for those meetings. Those discussions went very well, and that we are, we are very hopeful of getting their support in this coming session. Mr. Sears?
I'm in.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
I'll be talking about the Government Education Access Channel in just a little bit for the budget. The Septic Health Committee has not met since our last meeting, but Kelly did give a brief update on the grant we received.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. That brings us next to consideration of an appointment to a board or committee. We do have a vacancy on the Planning Board that we passed on filling last month. And so I would ask, we have before us the list of those candidates who may be interested in serving, and so I will open this up for discussion and perhaps a nomination.
Mayor Kehon, I would like to nominate Basil Belches for the Planning Board. I've worked with Basil on the multifamily working group. I appreciate Basil's engagement with the rezoning on C5, and he's shown a willingness to serve. So because of that, I would like to nominate him for the Planning Board.
All right, very good. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further discussion about that?
We've got a lot of qualified people on there.
Mm-hmm.
So that's discussion I got.
Okay, all right, very good.
I agree, we do have a lot of qualified people, and I believe he's shown a lot of interest, so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Hearing no other nominees being placed into nomination then, and having Basil's nomination duly made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. And thank you. We'll be getting a letter to Basil as well to thank him for his willingness to serve. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town attorney, Mr. Leidy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was asked to discuss with the board some issues regarding the current sign ordinance that the, that the town has, and I'd like to ask that we discuss that in closed session at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you. I think there's been a little discussion, and I think now would, now would be the appropriate time, if the board is willing, to, to enter in the closed session. John, we do not have the appropriate language.
I'll be glad to give it to you.
Okay, thank you, please do.
The motion should be to enter closed session in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters protected by the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege as allowed by General Statute 143-318.11A3.
Okay, great. Thank you. We'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great. The board will be in closed session. Great, the board will be in closed session.
The board has returned to open session. Mr. Lighty, do you have anything to report?
The board did not take any action while we were in closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to items referred to and presentations from the town manager. Andy?
I think David's going to go ahead and give the update on public services real quick.
Okay, thank you.
It's getting close.
I rode by the other day. It looks so great. It really does.
Yes, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. And what I have for you is something a little bit different than what I've presented during the course of the project. It's just some project photos. As we get closer with some of the finishing elements, I just wanted to give the board a sense of the progress that we've made over the past month. So up here on the screen, there's been multiple activities that have occurred this past month. The picture that I have here is of South Lark Street or South Lark Avenue, which was recently paved. We fit this into the project work. This was paved about three weeks ago. And in addition to South Lark Avenue, we also resurfaced South Pond Avenue. So we've got a new pavement surface in and around the project. In addition to that, we landscaped the west side of the project where the bulk of the facilities are located. Up on the screen, I've got the recent landscaping that was completed. You can see the sod that was put in around the live oaks fronting that property. You can see there was some cleanup that was done in this area right here in front of the combined Fleet Facilities and Sanitation Building, and really improving the aesthetics of that corridor. Here's a view looking southward along South Lark Avenue, just with the enhancements that were made, the general cleanup of the underbrush, and then also the installation of pine straw in and around the Lark Avenue corridor. In addition to that, there was some internal landscaping. You can see that because this is, I guess, a highly functional part of the facility, is that we looked at trying to mirror some of the landscaping that was done on the administrative building to bring connectivity between the two, tying some of the plantings together as well as enhance it with landscaping stone to go ahead and have something that's low maintenance as well. So you can see here, we've got crepe myrtles, we've got some mulley grass, some maiden grass, some Hollywood junipers. Here's another view here of the Fleet Building. Again, just trying to enhance a lot of these landscape islands throughout. You can see we've got Hollywood junipers surrounding the fuel tank to go ahead and create a visual buffer from the street, you know, to those facilities. And another addition this month was the fuel canopy. You can see right here, this has gone up within the past week or so, as well as a lot of connecting elements underneath it and to the washdown building. So I've got a couple of views here up on the screen for you that highlight the different angles. And this is the washdown building, which is the center of the screen. That's where a lot of the components for the two washdown areas will be contained. And you can see we've already started putting in some equipment this week. They energized the building. They'll be setting the gas meter later this week. And then it's just some finishing work with the addition of the compressor and some other minor utilities within the building in order to go ahead and get these facilities up and running. So we've made some good progress. In addition to this, there was some perimeter fencing that we recently completed with the project. We had about 50 percent of that perimeter fencing completed. We had about 50% of that perimeter fence replaced, and we were able to go ahead with the project funds to finish off the remaining balance of that perimeter fencing. So in total, it was close to about a mile's worth of fencing that we installed around the entire complex. So there's been a lot of progress that has been made. I think within the upcoming month, there's a lot of cleanup left to be done on the site. Like I said, there's some utility connections in order to bring some of these final elements online, but we're getting very close. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for David?
Yeah, the place looks, it looks amazing. And I was just wondering, it seems like with all the improvements in the structures to keep the trucks and everything in, it looks like this facility is going to save the town a lot of money. Is that kind of correct, in the long run?
In the long run, yes. I think one of the goals and objectives of the project was to try to contain a lot of our equipment and vehicles inside the structure to go ahead and increase their longevity. And so we've been able to do that. And, you know, the staff up there have really taken to utilizing those facilities as much as they can to be able to house their equipment. And, yeah, they're just settling right in.
And to be able to do some of their own maintenance on the vehicles as well and stuff.
Yes. In addition to that, we've got larger enhanced facilities, so we've got more room for them to be able to do their work inside. So it just makes that that much more efficient and productive.
Looks great, thank you.
Mr. Severs?
Yeah, great job, thank you David.
Great job, it looks awesome.
I just have to tell you this, I had a meeting as a consultant with one of our other local towns that will go unnamed, and they have looked at what we've done and they like it very, very much. And they actually would like to copy some of it in contrast to what they've done in the past, so.
Good, I'm glad to hear.
It's good. They want to know who our architects were and who our contractors were, so I'd like them to know that.
It will be interesting, you know, the washdown areas we have now are much more robust than we had before. And so there's two separate wash areas. There's the larger vehicle area, which the trucks can actually back down into. And then what David was showing is the washing equipment, and there's be a wand system that they can use to keep the trucks clean. And then there's also a drive-through wash station, much similar to what we used to have for the smaller vehicles. And I know they're looking forward to getting this all up and running and back online. And then I know Ms. Miller is interested in having our fuel dispensers back online because I know next budget year, she's going to budget for reduced fuel costs that we save by having our own fuel as opposed to using our wax cards, so.
Great.
All very exciting improvements and, you know, everything's worked out pretty well overall for this. I mean, you know, we had some additional expenses, you know, we had some additional revenue because of the bond financing. We were able to use that to meet these additional needs. And, you know, I think once this project's buttoned up, we're going to pretty much have everything we want. One of the things that I know facilities maintenance wanted was a sign shop, and I know they talked to you about that early on. And Stevens getting a new plotter, a sign plotter, in order to make all of his own signs. It's a pretty sophisticated piece of equipment, but it's going to be really nice for them.
Very good.
Yes, and to piggyback onto what Andy was saying, is the two washdown areas will be under the canopy. And so we have one that the sanitation trucks will be able to pull up in, and I'm highlighting this area right here. And we'll have a pressure washer that they can use to go ahead and wash down those vehicles. In addition, there is a drive-through area, and you can see this arch right here, that will be a rinse arch. So whether it's sanitation vehicles or some of our fleet vehicles, they'll be able to go ahead and drive through, rinse off, and then they'll also have the secondary option of using the pressure washer through those drive-through facilities. So we talked to staff and tried to make this as efficient and effective as possible to include all of our fleet vehicles.
Okay, great.
It will be interesting to see though, back to Commissioner Sanders' point about the longevity of our equipment, especially the sanitation vehicles, when we can wash them and store them inside.
Oh, yeah.
You know, they're about $400,000 apiece now, so, you know, we'll definitely be looking closely at our service life for those items. And when we can, when we can get more life out of something, we'll try to. You know, we don't want to get back to a system of deferring things, but we also want to get the most out of it because it's just becoming so expensive.
Yeah, I think that's going to make a huge difference, really. I mean, it's not, you know, I don't know about the sort of the day-to-day cost of operations, you know, because you have staff and you have lights and heat and all that sort of thing, but that protection of that equipment is going to be really, I think, going to really pay the evidence for us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you David, appreciate that.
All right, I think I've got the next item as well.
Okay.
Which is an update for our beach nourishment project. Last month, our consultant Moffett and Nickel was here to go ahead and talk about the schedule for our next beach nourishment project, which is scheduled for either '26 or '27. We talked about bidding that out over multiple years. One of the design considerations is the very south end of the project. And up here on the screen, I've got a view of the project template that was utilized back in the 2019 project. And you can see here that there's a hatch line right here, which represents that fill above water. And then there's a, this other hatch, which goes in the other direction, that shows the tie-in for that beach berm. Right here, where this hand is, that's where the ocean outfall is. And so the taper has always stopped short of that ocean outfall, with that ocean outfall being a constraint. In the past, there's always been an unknown as to what that permitting process would be to extend that onto the National Park Service property. Recently, as we've been talking about the design, we had some outreach with the National Park Service personnel to get some specifics on a permitting process if we were to extend that taper onto their property. We had a meeting back on the 21st of February just to explore the specifics of the, of that permitting process. I think there were some notes that were included in your packet, which just talked about some of these items, most of them to talk about the duration of the process and the data and the information that would be included as part of a permitting process to get authorization to extend onto the property. And it was a, it was a very, it was a very good meeting because what we found out is that they would not treat this like a normal beach nourishment project. They would treat this as a smaller scale project, and so the permitting requirements would be less more stringent. And this is something that could be obtained within about a six to eight week period. A lot of the information that we have for the other permitting agencies would apply to this. There was a couple nuanced items in their permit, we were able to go ahead and talk through those. And it seems like the process overall will be, will be pretty easy to go through. So our consultant Moffett and Nickel looked at a draft or a concept of extending that taper onto the park service property, and I think this is the preferred alternative. And essentially what this, this does is it gives a dual benefit. The shortened taper length and that geometry doesn't always provide very significant stability. By going ahead and lengthening this taper, it provides more stability and more in line with Mother Nature and how that would naturally form. So in addition to that benefit, it would also give a greater fill density to some of these properties on the south end of the project, these last half a dozen houses, that they would receive a greater fill density than they had received in the past. And it also permits this, the engineered dune to be extended further southward, again trying to provide a larger and greater benefit to these properties and meet the objective of being able to have that level of protection. And so what we would be asking to you today is some guidance on how to proceed forward with this design is, and I'll give you a little bit more information, is that this would result in about 14,000 cubic yards of additional material to be able to extend on the property. And the estimated value of that is about $170,000 to be able to accomplish this. And so understanding that there could be a benefit to maybe retaining this sand in place a little bit longer on the south end, and also giving benefit to these last half dozen property owners, just wanted to get some board feedback as in the process of moving forward with those permit drawings. And we would like to include this in the permit drawings that they are looking to submit by the end of this month.
Talk a little bit more, David, about the, you know, what this does for the longevity and the benefit to those homeowners, because I-